Common Council Meeting Tuesday, December 1st, 2015 at 7:00 PM. Can I get a confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice?
The meeting was noticed here at City Hall, Wiggly Wiggly and Dave's Ace Hardware.
Thank you. On the consent agenda, we are going to pull down 4C1 because that motion will require the waiving of the second and third reading. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion to approve the agenda with that 4C1 brought down for discussion.
And is there a second? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries and we have an agenda. Is there any public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action? Is that looking pretty blank? Okay, is there any, okay. If you want to talk on something that's later in the agenda, you'll have to flag us down. Item number four, approval of the consent agenda. There's a motion, is there a second?
Some of.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries and the consent agenda is approved. Item 4C1, approve the request from John Saknas to rezone property located on Belange Street from R4 to PUD and waive the second and third readings.
Oh, go ahead.
I'll make that motion to approve the request and waive the second and third reading, contingent upon the decisions and discussions based from the Plan Commission meeting. Whatever the Plan Commission approved for that otherwise.
They approved it as submitted.
Yeah, we did not put any other requirements on.
Okay. Except for he was gonna look at the landscaping. Are you gonna?
That was not included in the restrictions.
Okay.
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions or concerns or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Item number five, discussion and possible action on Class B winery license application from Timber Hill Winery LLC, doing business as Timber Hill Winery, located at 1223 Storeslake Road, Unit 1.
And just so the council is aware, this also would typically fall under the consent agenda but was asked to be pulled down. So this was, this is an alcohol license application for the Timber Hill Winery out in the Storeslake Business Park. Typically would be on the consent agenda under the personnel finance section.
Personnel Finance did recommend for...
Why did you put these here? Is there a motion?
A second.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further comment or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Obstaining.
All those abstaining. Do you have that? The motion carried. Item number six, discussion and possible action regarding accepting the 2016 Water Main Improvements Bill bid.
Okay, on November 19th, we opened up bids for the water main improvements. GMS Excavators were the low bidder for this work. The bid came in under the budget estimate, so we do have the money in the budget to pay for the work. If approved, they would like to have contracts signed and pre-construction meetings, and they would like to start weather permitting this winter yet for this project. So there's, there's a copy of the bids included with your memos, and if approved, we could get started on these contracts to get the work started.
Is there any questions or comments or anything? Or do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2016 Water Main Improvement Bid.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
On the motion, would you be able to accept the low bid from GMS Excavators included in the motion?
Yes. Good. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Don't be looking at me funny, it makes me nervous.
It's a long time ago somebody told me silence implies consent.
Item number seven, discussion and possible action regarding accepting the South High Pressure Zone Water Main bid.
Okay, this again, this bid was open on November 19th, and in the bid packet you see the, the number of bids we received, we actually received quite a few this time. And Fanning Excavating from Milton was the low, low bidder for this project. Again, it's below the budget estimate, so we do have budget funds for this project. They would also like to, if approved, have contracts signed so that they could also start with weather permitting in the winter to have this project done early in 2016.
I'll make the motion that we accept the South High Pressure Zone Water Main bid.
From?
From Fanning Excavating.
From Fanning Excavating.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number eight, discussion and possible action on ordinance number 415, an ordinance creating Section 50-81 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Milton, regulating the use of telephones for emergency calls.
Thank you. This ordinance was drafted in conjunction with Fire EMS, Police Services, as well as the Rock County Health officials, and with the strong assistance from Attorney Schrader. This, this ordinance is, one of those ordinances that most folks kind of take for granted, but there actually is no state law that prohibits the unlawful use of the 911 emergency system. So it's up to the local ordinances, or local municipalities to adopt an ordinance which, to regulate that unlawful use. So at the advisement of Attorney Schrader and in conjunction with the Rock County Health officials, the Fire EMS and Police Services, we drafted this ordinance and brought it forth today for council's consideration.
Do we have to do, waive a second and third, or we're good on?
That'll be up to you, but if you want to adopt it after today, yes, you need to waive the second or third.
Okay. All right, thank you. What are you guys thinking?
Is there something a little bit more descriptive in regards to this? I mean, what's the, what's the penalty?
Mark, what is the established penalty for a violator of this ordinance?
Well, it would go into the standard, excuse me, thank you. It would go into the standard penalty for first violations of city ordinances. I don't recall what that is offhand, if you would call it cheap, what that is either. So that, most of our ordinances are written such that they don't specifically include the penalty in there, and you can, but in, without that, then we refer to the standard provision in, I believe it's Chapter 1, I think that contains the standard penalty provisions. I can look that up, we can look that up for you, but I don't have that right here.
Fifty to 500 for first time.
Fifty to 500?
For first violation.
For first violation, okay.
Does it define what an emergency is? Because my question is more that we have some repeat callers.
That's what it, what it means, though. Human life is in jeopardy.
So it would address the repeat callers?
The, yeah, the, under the terms of the, this ordinance as written, which of course can be revised if you prefer, the definition of emergency is a situation in which property or human life are in jeopardy and the prompt summoning of aid is essential.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance number 415, regulating the use of telephones for emergency calls. I'll make that motion to waive the second and third and adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Item number nine?
Nine, sorry.
Discussion and possible action regarding ordinance number 416, an ordinance rezoning property in the City of Milton.
This is the ordinance that would be adopted by the City Council in order to approve the rezoning of the project that was previously discussed under the Plan Commission. So this would be in order to codify that, that rezoning in our official zoning map.
Any questions?
I, I do have a question. And maybe it's just the order that we're doing this. According to this memo here, it says that this lot is over 40% green space. This is the difference actually between the PUD and the R4, correct? Howie?
That, that was put in as a reference for you, that if it is an R4 lot, you only have to have 30% green space, and the PUD is a residential lot similar to an R4, and so this was just showing you that they're above what you would have, you know, for a regular residential residence. He's gonna have 40% green space instead of, the minimum is 30%. It, it was just a reference so you know there's more than the minimum.
Okay, so then, and this is going back to the actual Plan Commission meeting, so we have already approved this whole project as is, correct?
Yes, 'cause when you, when you approved it, you approved it with the ordinance and his specific implementation plan included in the ordinance, so, yes.
Okay, so then, by, by approving this change here, are we, is all of the decisions on this development made and nothing can come back to the Plan Commission or the council?
If, if they change something from that plan, they have to come back to Plan Commission.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, this is the approval of the rezoning.
Okay. I know, but we already, we already approved the development, so I guess I was, that's why I'm kind of confused, because normally we would do the plant, change the rezoning, do the rezoning first and then come back and do the rest of it.
Right, right. And it, because that was supposed to be on the consent agenda, the final authority in all these matters rests with the council. So, you know, I think under a situation like this, and we may be able to refer to Mark, if the council had some concerns with that, probably, with, with the actual site plan, it probably would have been under the former item on this agenda that we approved. This is specifically for the rezoning.
Okay, so even though he said that he would do extra barriers between the residential properties around that in the Plan Commission meeting, this has nothing to do with that, right?
Right.
Okay. Well, so everything is just pretty much a done deal as it is on the maps that we have.
Well, the, the first item that we approved was the opportunity to, if the council wanted to change something, the first item that was approved on this during, during the council's agenda, item 4C1 was voted on separately.
Right.
That would have been the opportunity, or that would, would have been an opportunity to change, I think, make changes to the site plan. This is specifically for the rezoning of that property. So, you know, you can't have one without the other, but this is specifically for that rezoning.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the rezoning to a planned unit development.
And?
Second.
Are we waiving?
Yeah.
Oh, yes. And waive the second and third reading, then adopt.
Now that you are, I, I'll still sell the second.
Thank you. Thank you for the team effort at the end of the council there. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Item number 10, discussion and possible action regarding City of Milton's property insurance.
At the November 10th meeting, it was staff's recommendation to exit our current carrier for next year because the premium doubled, and we said we were investigating a few other options. We have finished investigating those options, and we believe that going with MPIC, which is a kind of an arm of our current liability carrier of SEVMC, makes the most sense because the coverage mirrored what we had before, and actually the premiums is a little bit less than we paid last year, so. And that budget reduction is included in the next agenda also.
Okay. Any questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve, is it entering into a contract? What am I, what are we doing?
I don't know if it's really, engaging coverage with, engaging property coverage with MPIC.
Okay. Any questions on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number 11, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2015-27, adapting of the 2016 budget.
And, thank you. The last time we discussed this was on December, no, I'm sorry, geez, November 15th, in November. We, we held the public hearing on November 17th. At that time, there was, you know, considerable discussion about a number of options in the budget, and what we have done is taken all of the discussion and additions and subtractions since the budget was presented on October 6th, and reflected that in the, in the box in the center of page one, showing the decreases, showing the various decreases from the bus service and the addition of the police car, use of the sidewalk funds, and, and what that means, when it's all said and done, is upon adoption, there will be a 6.45% increase to the City of Milton city tax portion of the tax rate. So that would be the adopted budget this evening, based on all the changes that it made since October 6th. Good thing is, since October 6th, we've shaved over 2% off the proposed increase. So although we obviously all would agree that we'd like to see more, as we went through that budget process, we realized that a lot of those increases to the budget are unfortunately outside of our control, and I think the council did a good job of, of finding areas that still had some flexibility, and at the end of the day, came forth with a 6.45% increase. I know I've said it a number of times, and it's one of those things that it probably bears repeating over and over again, is that, not that this year was easy, and unfortunately next year will be more difficult, based on just the way the, the system works. Each year we'll get less and less, and, but we'll continue to do the same as, as we have in years past. So originally when this budget proposed, it was a budget of no service reductions, but the service has been reduced with the bus service, as folks are aware, but that was to a savings of $24,000 to the taxpayers, so that was part of the, the decrease to the 6.45%. So the budget still includes no borrowing component, nothing on the credit card, and, you know, puts us in a good position for capital expenditures moving into 2017 in the way of DPW equipment, fire department and police equipment as well.
I have a question for Dan. Your 2015 budget numbers that you have on this sheet, is that with the adjustments that we had made in 2015?
No.
No.
'Cause that's all based on what actually happened.
Okay.
'Cause the levy didn't change even though the budget changed, because all those budget amendments came from fund balance or, or contingency or other funding sources.
Uh huh.
We still brought in the same amount. We obviously couldn't go back and amend last year's tax bills.
Oh, right.
So everything's just looking at, what did we tax last year versus what are we, what's proposed for 2016?
Well, I can say, as a council member, that I, I'm glad that we're not taking on any more debt, and I'm glad that we are looking at what our needs are as opposed to fighting with previous numbers. I think it's important that we look out for what our citizens expect in the City of Milton with their, with the expenses that, that we are incurring as a city for them, as far as their services, and then also the quality of life programs that we have. And I'm sure that you're looking for a motion on this, so I will make a motion that we approve the Resolution 2015-27 for the 2016 budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further questions or comments? Okay, here we go. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We have a budget for 2016, and the motion carries unanimously. Item number 12, general items.
I have a general item. I would just like to reiterate my previous comments, that I would like to see us look into a transportation study for both inside the city and going into Janesville also.
Anything else? Mayor and Alder Person reports. Dave?
Just 13.
Jeremy? Maxine? Lisa?
We talked out.
Come on. Okay, I have something to say. It's a merry Milton holiday, this coming weekend, in the City of Milton, and we have lots of very cool things going on. And I, right away, would like to thank everyone who has donated to the Christmas tree lighting. We've had several donations, and it's gonna be awesome to see all of the, all of the families enjoying it. I just want to remind everybody that Santa will arrive at Railroad Park at 4:30, and he's going to be lighting the trees. He's going to be driven on one of our fire engines from the Milton Junction Square to Goodrich Square, and then he is going to be lighting the trees at Goodrich Square. We'll have a proclamation by the mayor. We have a special story, a tale of a young tree. We have a book signing from one of our local authors, and then we also will have cookies and cocoa that the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts are gonna be selling, and there will be a bonfire, so bring your lawn chairs if you want to sit by the fire, and we, of course, will be doing caroling, and there's gonna be lots of opportunities for pictures.
Okay, I just want to let you know, I'll be there.
Well, I hope everybody's gonna be there.
Informal mayor attire, I just want you to know.
Top hat and monocle.
Pretty much. It's not cheap to be a mayor these days. Staff report, city administrator.
I want to thank the council for the approval of the budget. It's one of those things in, in our profession that is always a difficult process, and it's always one that, there's always a lot of give and take, and it's unfortunate that, you know, at times it, it does kind of pit, pit each other against ourselves internally and externally, but I think we did a good job this year of having discussions and approving that budget, and I know there's been a lot of work that's gone into it, and it, you know, the council sees it's coming on October 6th, but I can tell you, folks like Dan and Howie and Scott and Lauren and Lisa, and Alena and Inga and everybody else, that they're working on it long before it comes October 6th. So it's, you know, I appreciate everybody's efforts in that, and it's not, not an easy process, but I appreciate the unanimous approval of it. That means a lot to me, and it means a lot to staff too, it really does. So thank you.
Chief of the Joint Fire Department.
Glad to be back.
Well, I thought that was Chris all the time. Don't tell him I said that.
And I actually walked in on my own too.
Oh, good job.
Great walking in, that's great.
The only thing that we have is tomorrow night is the commission meeting, which is unusual night, but they're combining the November and December meetings on, on tomorrow night's agenda, so it'll meet at the town hall at 7:00 PM.
Thanks. Chief of the Police Department.
Only one update for you tonight, since the last time I've spoken with you. Zek Anaker, a police officer with our organization, has left to become a Rock County deputy, and he started, he's been there a week. So we have offered the position, and he accepted, to Justin Geske, who's been a part-time officer with us for a while, and we have moved him into a full-time slot. So congratulations to Justin, he's done a great job for us already, and will hopefully continue to do so.
Thank you. City Clerk, Deputy Treasurer, Director of Public Works. Hey, good job on the snow removal.
Yes.
Could've just waited for Mother Nature.
A lot of people did.
It's a trial run.
It's all the sand delivery. It's Salted Sand Delivery Day, but we're doing something a little different. You have to call down to the garage and say that you want, you know, sand at your address. It, it saves the guys driving all over town trying to find where there's a couple buckets in somebody's driveway, so. So if, if you want sand this year, salted sand, you have to call and get on the list. But there's also the pile down there with the shovel in it, so, and that's there all the time, so.
And I love that service. So does our city administrator.
Maxine will be down there with the shovel, the pile.
I get first quote.
Okay, thank you. Director of the Library.
We just received notification of a $50,000 gift from a local foundation, so that's still moving along, and we're nearing the end on our construction documents, so we're meeting with the architects again this week and next week, so.
And don't we have somebody famous in our midst now, on the library board?
Bill Wilson just was honored from the Wisconsin Library Association. He was inducted in their Hall of Fame, and he has been invaluable to us, as you can imagine, throughout this whole process.
And we'll have to retire his glasses or something at some point, I don't know. Put him in the library.
And Lisa, could you give the council an update on our fundraising, where we are?
Sure. We are over 2.2 million at this point. We're hoping to wrap it up in January or February at the very latest. Just had a successful auction, thank you to Badger State Auction, two weeks ago, in one afternoon, they raised over $35,000, and that's gonna be for the ag area, the children's area, which will have, as I've mentioned, the, the mini storefronts and general ag education for the community, so.
Finance Director.
I will be sending these numbers to the county so they can start to generate the tax bills that we will hopefully get mailed out late next week is the approximate timeframe. And then tomorrow, we find out for Moody's what our bond rating was. So, we don't anticipate any changes, but we will let you know once we find out tomorrow.
And we have something new and exciting in number 23 on our agenda.
Okay, so this is just something that has kind of developed. It's a report of the Municipal Court, who is their own department here. Their numbers and such used to be reported by the Chief of Police at Public Safety, but there are some very strict rules, I guess, about separation of the court and the police department. So, Chief will no longer be reporting those numbers, and instead, the Municipal Clerk will submit a report to the council just regarding forfeitures, court cases, so that you can kind of see what's been going on in, in her department. So, so it's just something that I, I don't think she's gonna start attending this meeting unless you have questions or if there's any particular concerns, but you'll start seeing these reports every month.
And for those members on Public Safety, we're not going, this will be the report that Public Safety will see as well, the Public Safety Committee, so I'm not going to include them on my monthly report. It's going to be a separate document.
Okay. Item number 24, motion to adjourn. 'Cause there's been a lot of heavy lifting on this side tonight. All those in favor? All those opposed? We are unanimously adjourning. Thank you, everybody. Good job.